It's now seven o'clock according to the official clock. I will call tonight's committee of the whole meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Administrator, please call the roll.
Good evening, everyone. Alder Allen.
Present.
Mayor Aratafrada. Alder Gerhart.
Here.
Alder Herbst.
Here.
Alder Jetser.
Here.
Alder Maldonado.
Maldonado.
Here.
Alder Strassmann is absent with excuse. Alder Udell.
Here.
Alder Wheeler.
Here.
You have a quorum, Mr. President.
Excellent. Next, we should approve the minutes of the March 22, 2023 meeting. Is there a motion?
I move approval.
All right. Any discussion of the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is public appearances for any non-agenda items. It does not look like there's anybody online, and I see nobody in the room. So with that, we will dive into our three discussion topics tonight. The first one is the discussion of public records law and open meetings law, ethics, and Robert's Rules of Order. And our city attorney has graciously joined us in the building today. So Valerie, why don't you start us off?
Thank you. I'm here to speak with you all. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm being told my microphone's not close enough. Okay. I'm here to speak with you briefly today about public records, open meetings, ethics conflicts. I'll touch on Robert's Rules as well. I would also like to, I guess, first and foremost, introduce myself to our newest alder. I'm Valerie Zisman, the city attorney. We just met briefly, and most of you have talked with me at length, or at least briefly, over the past year, years, depending on your tenure on this council. So a lot of the information that I'll be presenting to you tonight may be familiar to most of you. I hope it serves as a refresher. I hope it isn't too boring, and if it is, I apologize if this is stuff you already know. It doesn't hurt to kind of bring it to the front of your mind and recollection. And for those of you that might learn something new, I'm happy to assist if I can. And this certainly isn't intended to be an exhaustive list, right? I mean, there are many trainings that even attorneys can attend again and again on the topic of open meetings and public records law. There are complicated compliance issues. You don't have to be experts in these topics, but I do want you to be aware of their existence because I think the most important thing for you is to have these topics on your radar. If you know that there is a question, you can come and find the answer. I'll either know the answer, or I will research it and get back to you. So really, the purpose of this presentation is to familiarize all of you with these topics enough that you can identify issues and come and ask for advice when you feel that that's appropriate. So with that, I will tell you all that this is the first PowerPoint presentation I've done in many years. I've sort of been winging this for a while. We're trying something new this year. We'll see if it sticks. If we like it, we'll keep doing it, and if not, we'll revert to the old way of doing things. So I apologize if I am a little dense on the presentation. I used to be good at this some decades ago. I'm a little rusty. And hopefully, I'm not too stiff because, again, usually I just kind of talk to you all off of a brief list, and here I have this presentation. So I apologize in advance if this is dry. I will say, please, feel free to, I think, with the president's permission, if you just want to raise your hand and be recognized and interrupt me at any point if you think your question is relevant. I will not take any offense. I do have a few sections also set aside after each topic for questions also at the end. And again, I can't say this enough times, my door and my telephone are always available. Walk in, give a call. I am happy to help you if I can, certainly. So don't hesitate to reach out. This isn't like the only contact we will have, and now you have to have all your answers after today. So with that, my role as a city attorney is to represent the city and hence its member parts as an attorney. So it is my job to help you with these questions. So don't feel like you're imposing if you're calling me. Don't feel like it's an inconvenience. It is my job to help you, and so please, please do take advantage of this invitation. I sincerely mean it. I'm here to help. A lot of times, coming proactively with a question can solve a lot of potential problems and avert problems. That said, even if there is already an existing problem, likewise, I'm here to help. I am here on behalf of the city to serve you. So please do keep in mind that I'm a resource for you. That said, I do have to point out that I am not just like a personal attorney that is on retainer for your personal needs. So I do not have expertise in many legal areas that you may have questions about. And even if I did, it really is outside the scope of my employment to help you figure out how to close on that house you want to buy, or a dispute with your neighbor that you may have, or some other legal issues that you may run into. That's really just not something I can help you with. That said, if you have a question and you're not sure if I can help you or not, come to me. I'll certainly let you know if something falls outside of that scope of that employment. Okay? And lastly, and I think this is a really important point to drive home, I'm here to give advice and assistance. I don't do enforcement. So in other words, if any of you believe that any other members of this body or other officials are violating open meetings law, or a public records law, or some sort of ethics violation, please don't expect me to enforce it. I'm happy to speak to folks about a potential violation. I certainly will do that. I will advise people as to what I believe the appropriate course of action is. But these types of violations are not handled by the city attorney in terms of, you know, the prosecution of the violations. That is something that would be handled either by the DOJ, the Department of Justice, Attorney General, or the district attorney in Dane County. So, you know, and to that end, if you wanted to file a complaint against somebody, or either in this body, or anywhere really for that matter, just know that that's how it works in Wisconsin. That's not something that I enforce. And likewise, in addition to knowing that that's where that complaint goes, please know that coming to me doesn't mean that if you've done something bad that now I'm going to somehow punish you, okay? So again, I'm here to help you, okay? So if you've done something and you think, oh, this is kind of a problem, how do we fix this? You know, I'm here to serve you and the city, okay? So I just want to put that out there. So with that, if you're comfortable proceeding to the first riveting topic of the evening, I'd like to talk a little bit about open meetings law. So the Wisconsin Open Meetings Law is contained in Sections 19.81 to Sections 19.98 of the Wisconsin statutes. And generally speaking, the Open Meetings Law requires that all meetings of governmental bodies are noticed, that they're open, and that they're accessible to the public. So and there are, of course, limited exceptions to that. For example, closed sessions, which are enumerated in the statutes, and they're narrowly construed. So if, you know, on occasion, we will go into a closed session, and that is something that is still noticed, that we have to notice that closed session, but it is not accessible to the public. And that's a privilege that extends to this body or other governmental bodies in certain narrow exceptions. The policy behind open meetings law is to allow our citizens and our residents to be informed and to be able to participate in the affairs of government. And so you can see there's a paragraph, I won't read it to you because I trust you can do that, but that's right in our state law that says that this is why we have this law. And there's also provision of the law that specifically says the open meetings law is to be broadly interpreted to promote the policy of openness. So what that means is that when there are closed questions of, well, is this or isn't this a meeting, courts generally will favor the decision that will keep this, that will find, that will favor open government, right? So we don't want to use technicalities to get around open meetings because the courts, if that ever got to court, don't see it that way. So assume that the law will be interpreted with the most openness that can be interpreted to it. So it applies to meetings of governmental bodies. So that means obviously this body, but it also means subunits of our government. So that includes our boards, commissions, committees, ad hoc committees that are created by ordinance, or rule, or order. And a meeting means a convening of members of a governmental body for the purpose of exercising the responsibilities, authorities, power, or duties delegated or vested in that body. So the way that the courts have interpreted what is or isn't a meeting is by applying what's known as a two-part test. One is the purpose of the meeting, so why are you all gathered here today? And the other is how many of you are there? The purpose of the meeting, if it's to conduct governmental business, that satisfies one part of the test. And then the number is what we talk about, quorum, is the number of members that are present. Is it sufficient to determine the body's course of action? Conducting governmental business is an expansive term, so it's not just voting. It can include preliminary discussions and decisions. It can include information gathering. You don't necessarily have to talk amongst yourself about it. So for instance, if all of you gathered to observe the conditions of a piece of property, that there may be some development happening, or chronic nuisance actions, or something of that nature, you may not even discuss it. You're just there to gather information and not talk with each other. But if it's something that's going to be before this body for some kind of decision down the road, that would satisfy the purpose portion. And then we get to the numbers half of the test, and that's kind of where things can get a little bit interesting. So quorum is how many members must gather to constitute, you know, a meeting. So and I'm not talking about the quorum of this body where the clerk or the administrator says, we have a quorum, right? Because we know you need six members of the council to have a meeting, and for boards and commissions and committees, that's, you know, different calculation depending on that body and how many members it has. But here, we're talking about how many members are sufficient to influence or determine the outcome of an action. And that's not always just the majority of the membership. So for instance, it's not just five is a quorum and four is okay for purpose of this test. A sufficient number of members might exist when there are enough members to block an action from passing. So for example, and that's what we call negative quorum, right? So for example, in a budget amendment where you need two-thirds vote, just three alders could block a vote. So in that case, three of you could constitute a quorum. In addition, the number of quorum for a meeting in an open meetings kind of action can be determined based on the fact that fewer than all eight of you are in attendance. So if only six of you are in attendance, you can have just four people determine the outcome of a vote as opposed to five, right? So in short, quorum can be a little bit dicey. You know, the most conservative opinion, and I've heard some city attorneys give it, I won't give it to you today, but I'll tell you that I've heard city attorneys say is that anytime you have two or more alders, you have a potential quorum. And I think, you know, on its face, that potentially could be true. I can come up with a hypothetical situation where you, there's only six of you, and somebody abstains, and you need a supermajority, and bam, somehow with two, you were able to block a vote. I'm not going to tell you that if there are two of you in a room, you have to turn around and run in opposite directions and pretend like that never happened, right? But I do want you to be mindful of the fact that the more of you gather in a room, or not in a room, and we'll talk about that in a moment, but the more of you start conversing, or discussing, or gathering information about something, and again, remember the purpose, right? Not about your birthday party, not about the best restaurant to cater lunch, but about city business, the more likely you are to run into an issue. So be mindful of that.
Valerie, if I could just interrupt there for a moment. I do remember when we were in the process of developing our first comprehensive plan that comprehensive plan amendments have to be submitted by three alders. And I remember some discussion about how that could transpire without violating this. Could you just touch on that briefly since we just had a note about that yesterday?
Well, you know, one of the things to keep in mind is that sponsoring an amendment doesn't always mean that you have an open meetings violation. Because for instance, you may agree that something ought to be discussed, but you're not agreeing to determine the outcome. So that's one of the considerations there. Now that said, I do think generally my preference is the fewer numbers, the better. So if, you know, if you're going to sponsor a budget amendment, for example, you know, do you need four people to sponsor it, or five? Just because you all support it, you can vote that way, right? So but you know, that can become an issue if you're making a dedicated commitment to vote a certain way upfront, and not just saying, I want this on the agenda. Again, it depends. How many people come to the meeting? How many people vote? How many do you need to block, block a measure from passing?
On that note, Valerie, my question is then, you know, if we wanted to sponsor something, just passing it around, getting information, are we violating anything? It's just like, I just want somebody's opinion, you know? Here's my idea, and I just want someone's opinion, but I'll ask a couple of people.
So these types of things are really fact-specific and facts-intensive. So I can't really answer you because I don't know what you're saying in this conversation, right? So let me give you an example. So let's say you're thinking, maybe we should talk about term limits, for example. Should we or shouldn't we have term limits? So, you know, are you calling other alders and saying, will, if I propose this, will you support this? And now you're calling every single alder and discussing it with them, and now we're getting into what is probably, I'm guessing, the next topic, which is walking quorums, right? You're basically gathering votes, you're having a conversation, the kind of conversation that should be happening here. That could be a problem. On the other hand, if you're saying, I am looking for a sponsor to put this on the agenda so we can discuss it, and you're not saying, will you vote yes for this? Let's talk about pros and cons. Let's iron out everything and agree to vote together in a particular manner, right? So that is how I would approach it if you need a sponsor. But again, you really only need one other alder to place something on the agenda. So my feeling is, once you have that one alder, the rest of the discussions ought to be happening here. And remember, the policy behind all of this isn't just, it's not to make your lives difficult, although unfortunately, that is at times a side effect, right? An unintended, perhaps an unintended consequence. But the purpose of all of this is really that the public deserves the right to see these conversations happen in public. So that is why this law exists, and that is why these constraints are placed upon you. So if you're looking for somebody to help you get something on an agenda, I would say that's a procedural matter, right? Much like if you're calling all the alders and you're saying, I want to call a special meeting, or the mayor calls and says, I need to call a special meeting. We have an urgent matter we have to act on. Are you available on Tuesday? Are you available on Wednesday? Are you available on four o'clock? Are you available at three o'clock? That's not a problem because you're not agreeing to vote as a block, and you're not having conversations about how you're going to act and why. You're not making policy decisions here. You're just scheduling, right? So likewise, talk about getting something up for discussion, but limit the discussion to a meeting that is noticed. Does that help? Absolutely. Great. Great question. Any other questions? I'll keep going on then. So then, you know, some of the issues that come up is, well, is this a meeting? Have we convened? So in the olden times, and admittedly, probably before my at least professional career, you know, people largely communicated by letter, right? Let's say 30 years ago, okay? So we weren't emailing each other constantly. I mean, email was around, but it wasn't as prevalent as it is today. Guess, was AOL around? Maybe not quite. Anyway, I don't think government members were doing, you know, discussing conversations by social media then, or in AOL chat rooms, or what have you. So let's take the kind of the low-tech example, a written letter. So one of you sends a letter to another of you and says, you know, this is a great thing, and I heard about it, and we should do that in our city, you know? And maybe one of you sent that letter to four other members of this body. You know, generally speaking, where the responses are spread over time, generally, it's one-way communication, but even if there is a response, it's really separated in time. It really doesn't look like a meeting. But here's where it starts looking more like a meeting. Now let's say you have a phone call, or in this day and age, a video conference, something that looks a lot more like instantaneous communication, even email, right? You write an email, somebody replies all 10 minutes later, and then another response comes in, and it's really starting to look like a conversation. All of a sudden, it's starting to look like a meeting because now you're having instantaneous, or very close to instantaneous communication. This isn't spread over days, and weeks, and months. This is happening like this, you know? Comment, response, counterpoint, another point, and then a discussion, and then an agreement. So be wary of those kinds of situations. Email, discussion boards, instant messaging, social networking, these things may, in some situations, implicate open meetings, depending on how it's used. Same thing about text messages. If enough of you have essentially gathered via text message, right? So if you have a group chat between all your alders, and you're talking about city business, that's a problem because I'm guessing you didn't invite the entire public, and certainly, it wasn't noticed. So be mindful of that because these things kind of start looking more and more like a meeting the more instantaneous and the more involved the discussion gets. And you know, there's kind of a, this idea, and it applies in many areas of law, actually, is that the law takes time to catch up to the technology. Our technology has advanced greatly in the last 50 years, and even the last 15 years as far as communication and social networking, and the way that we communicate and connect with each other. The law's not quite there yet, and there's not a ton of cases out there. But what's happened is that the Attorney General for the State of Wisconsin has issued some opinions. And in those opinions, they've opined that text messages can certainly constitute records, and that text message communication could look like, depending on how it's used, could constitute a meeting. So I think I've already kind of touched on this concept of a walking quorum. So a meeting can sometimes result from a series of gatherings. It could either be physical gatherings, so a couple of you gather and talk about something, and then one of those people goes and talks about that same topic with several other members. It could also, again, be kind of electronic, right? It doesn't have to be a physical gathering. But it's a series of gatherings among groups of members that each one is smaller than a quorum, but kind of altogether, it constitutes enough numbers, and there's an agreement to act uniformly. And again, it's sufficient to control the outcome of the body. So again, very complex, very fact-specific. Consult with me if you're in doubt. And again, just always keep in mind, are you having a discussion about something that the public should know about? And if so, save it for the council meeting. That's kind of my broad, general advice. There are notice requirements that are imposed on the city by the Open Meetings Law.
Valerie, before we get off that topic.
Oh, sure. Yeah, you bet.
I just want to point out, as I often do at this, during this discussion, that while the legislature has gone through great pains to pass all these requirements on local bodies, they themselves are exempt, and that's why you have these Republican caucuses and Democrat caucuses where they get together behind closed doors and make rules, make laws, make policy. They just, this was just on, at the federal level, on the debt limit, where these deals are cut and stuff happens behind closed doors, and the legislature feels no qualms about doing that. Yet they have restricted us rather severely as far as what we can do in the same way. So I, it's one of those things where if we're going to have sunshine laws, they should apply to everybody, including the state legislature. Not that you have any control over that.
I don't have any control over that. I will tell you that municipal government is a creature of law, of state law, right? So there's no, there's no reference of municipal government in the Constitution. We're created by state law. And so, as I like to say, the legislature giveth and the legislature taketh away. And sometimes, we don't like what we get from the legislature. And to the extent that we can, there's a League of Wisconsin Municipalities that gets together and lobbies on behalf of municipalities to promote our interests and promote fairness in how we're allowed to kind of self-govern in that manner. But ultimately, I think, Jay, you have a point. And that is that there are different rules, unfortunately, at times, that apply to different bodies. But all I can tell you is what we have to do here.
Yes.
So, you know, staff will handle notices, so really, we just need to know that a meeting is happening because we can't notice something that we don't know about. So obviously, there's a schedule for committee of the whole meetings, council meetings, various boards and commissions. We know when those meet, and we handle that. And by we, I mean the clerk and the clerk's department. If you think you'll be attending other meetings where many of you will gather, and it is not one of those meetings, work with the city administrator and the city clerk, and they can help post what's called a bad key notice, which basically just says, a bunch of us will be here, and we probably won't be doing city business, but just in case, here you go. Now you know, we'll be here. Come to if you'd like. Kind of like a party invitation. So that might extend to kind of like, maybe news releases that might be happening in the city, or other types of events that are technically meetings of the common council, but essentially may have a quorum of you present. The big takeaway is just let us know if you're going to be somewhere in large numbers. And certainly, we'll try to keep an eye on it as well if we know that there's a city-affiliated event, and we'll handle that when we can. But if we don't know, we can't notice it for you. As I mentioned, I think probably a whole bunch of times, but I'll say it again, so try to limit your discussions of city business to these city meetings, right? Because if you don't, you might run into a problem if you have a sufficient number. Let staff know when you think you'll be attending an event with other members. Be mindful of quorum. Be mindful of negative quorum, which is when you can block an action. And walking quorum. Avoid replying all to your emails if those emails are the mayor and council listserv. So for example, I or the city administrator, possibly other departments heads, or even members of the community might send an email to all of you. So if you want to reply, be careful to reply, not reply all. I mean, one single reply is probably not going to make or break anything, but these things snowball quickly. So just, my advice is just don't do it. And I say that having accidentally replied all to things that I didn't mean to reply all to. So these things happen sometimes, but just try to remember which one of those buttons goes to the whole group. And the other thing I want to mention is sometimes we'll have folks from the community come in and want to talk about things that aren't on the agenda, right? We have non-agenda items and public appearances. And we invite members of our great city to come in and speak about just about anything they want to speak about that they think the council ought to know about. There's nothing wrong with people coming in and doing that, but we really need to be very careful not to discuss those things. So if somebody comes in and wants to complain about their garbage pickup, or about the new playground set, or whatever their problem may be, or praise for that matter, maybe they want, or idea or project, whatever it is that they want to talk about, they come in here, they get it on your radar, and you want to talk about it. The next step should be to just make a note of it, speak with the administrator, speak with the mayor, ask to get it on the agenda. We'll talk more about how to get things onto the agenda. But get it on the agenda the next meeting, or the following meeting, or three meetings down the road, and then we'll notice it and we'll discuss that topic so that everyone in the community knows that topic will be discussed, not just the individual that brought that to your attention that day. Does that make sense? Great. So that's here. We have a pause. If you have any questions on this particular topic, otherwise, I will move on to the next riveting item. Yeah?
Yeah, asking for a friend. If there's like a new councilman, and he or she might be, you know, looking to the other alders for some advice, how, I mean, what sorts of topics do we need to avoid? How do we determine whether seeking advice is going to be somehow violating some of these rules?
Well.
Or even, I'll go one step further. Collaborating. Let's say that Randy and Jim want to talk about District Four related things. Is that something that needs a public notice?
I think that if there are two of you speaking about a matter, that will almost never, and I'll say almost never, be a problem. So I would not lose sleep over that. If you start to have three alders, that starts getting warmer. And four, I would definitely not do that. So again, my recommendation would be collaborate with one other alder. You need another alder to get something on the agenda anyway. If you want advice, again, that kind of depends on what you mean when you say advice. So if you come in and you say, hey, can you give me an idea of like, how does, how does voting work? Or how do these meetings work? Or what happens at budget time? You know, these are general discussions. But if you're starting to talk about specific initiatives, right? Again, if you're limiting to just one alder, I don't think you have a big problem there. But once you start involving several, now it's starting to look like you're having, again, these kind of policy decision-making discussions behind closed doors. The other thing I would put out there is that I would encourage you to make great use of our city administrator. He's sitting right there, Chad Brecklin. You might have met him. You might have met him. A lot of advice as far as the functioning and the logistics, as well as myself and the city clerk. So we can help you figure out the sort of how does this work piece. Not the policy or the politics, of course. That's not our bailiwick. But if you're looking for just like, how do I get something on the agenda? Or how, you know, what needs to be part of that packet? Or how do I submit it? Or when, you know, what's the process? When will this be referred out? When will the action possibly take? What are the dates? All of that stuff, you know, staff can help you with. Does that help?
Yes.
Great.
Thank you.
We may talk about a few of those things in the next presentation. Now, isn't that a great teaser to keep them awake?
You bet.
It's working.
Great. So I will move on to the public records law, which is kind of the companion piece of the open meetings law because just one would not be enough fun. So let's talk about the paper portion of sort of sunshine laws. The federal component or counterpart to this is known as the Freedom of Information Act. Sometimes people refer to the Wisconsin Public Records Law as a freedom of information request. Technically, it's not. It's a public records request. It doesn't really matter what you call it. The purpose of it is to shed light on the workings of government and on acts of public officers and employees. It's supposed to assist members of the public in becoming an informed electorate, much like the open meetings law. And it's a basic tenet of our democratic system. So it's the law. And what it means is that when a public records request is received, it is forwarded to the authority's records custodian. And then the authority begins a search for records, reviews the responsive records, decides whether there's any exceptions, applies a balancing task. Records may be redacted. And then we have to provide a letter that explains why the redactions were made. And that's kind of like the general process of public records. Now, you as elected officials are all custodians of your own records. So what that means is that the responsibility, the legal responsibility for your records that you create lies with you, which might sound like a heavy burden. And it is because public records requests can be onerous and burdensome and time-consuming. So we have a solution for that, which I'll talk about in just a moment. But just explain to you, first of all, what a record is. That's any material on which written, drawn, printed, spoken, visual, or electromagnetic information, or electronically generated or stored data, is recorded or preserved regardless of physical form or characteristics which has been created or is being kept by an authority. So things that aren't records. Drafts, notes, preliminary documents, published materials that are available at the library, purely personal property, think pictures of your kids, for example, and material with limited access rights such as copyrights or patents. Things that are records. Things that are not created by an authority but is in our possession. Personal emails and texts and calls and documents that are on the authority's account. So think personal emails on your work email address. Business emails, texts, calls, and documents on your personal accounts. So that would be any kind of city business that you do on your personal email or your personal phone. Data and databases, social media, contractors' records, police body camera and dash cam So that list is fairly extensive. Now, personal emails, calls, and documents on an authority's account, technically is a record. Generally, disclosure is not required, but keep in mind, it is technically a record if it's on the authority's accounts. And then there's kind of the flip side of that. So government business that is on personal accounts. These materials may be records. The important thing here is that it is the content, not the form, that determines whether something's a record. So it doesn't matter if it's on your personal cellphone and it's a text message. If it's about city business, it is a city record. So the recommendation here is that you have to be very careful in conducting a search of relevant accounts when you receive a public record. Personal materials on your private accounts, of course, are not subject to disclosure because they're not a record. So you don't have to worry about those. Again, content, not format. So emails, database files, PowerPoint presentations, audio and video recordings, web-based documents, recorded Zoom meetings, social media, cellphones, including texts. All of these things can become a record based on their content. As I mentioned, you're custodians of your own records. So the solution that I have for you, and again, I don't do enforcement, I just give you advice, use your city-issued email for city business. Now, members of boards and commissions and committees don't have city server emails and so they don't have that opportunity. But as alders and as mayor, you have dedicated city email addresses. This is why you want to use them and not use your personal email accounts for city business. When a record comes in, we have staff, the clerk's department, as well as IT staff, that will search city servers, that will go through the onerous process of identifying responsive records, weeding out the records that aren't responsive, going through and redacting the information that might be appropriate, et cetera. So we will do that for the servers that are city servers, and that includes your emails. What we will not be able to do that for is your personal email, your personal Facebook messages, your personal Nextdoor messages, your text messages, et cetera. So be wary of using those forms of communication for creating records about city business. That's not to say you can't have a Facebook account or text each other, just it's what you're texting about, right? So if you want to have a conversation about a city topic, either use city servers or better yet, pick up the phone. Because when you pick up the phone, there is no record. There's a record of a phone call, but there's no record being generated because unless you're recording it, of course. In which case, you would have a record. So perhaps don't record it unless you want to turn it over, potentially pursuant to a records request. You know, you have to keep these records for a lengthy period of time, up to seven years. You may not have your phone for seven years. You may not have storage capacity on your phone for seven years. You may forget your login password for your Yahoo account that you were emailing from. All of these unfortunate things might happen and I don't know what a judge would say if you found yourself in that situation where you can't turn over records because you've lost control. You have an obligation to keep them. All of these problems are resolved if you just keep that communication on city servers. We have servers, we have backups, we have archiving, and we will handle all of that for you. So that will make your life much easier in the event that a public records comes in. And those of you who have been on the council long enough know that that does happen. And they come in spurts. But sometimes when there's something contentious going on, there will be a public records request for, you know, the last three years worth of communication between this alder and that developer, or that alder and this other alder, or this rezone application or what have you. You've seen these things through, those of you who might be veteran members. I hope you don't have to deal with it, but it does happen from time to time. So I will leave you with this advice when it comes to records. What's, I was telling the mayor this just a couple of days ago. Dance like nobody's watching and email like your words will one day be read aloud in a room full of stuffy lawyers in a deposition. And I'm only half kidding. So just keep that in mind when you send your messages. However you send them, again, I prefer not texts for obvious reasons that I discussed, but whatever record you make, keep in mind, the joke may not carry, the context may not transfer, the, you know, familiarity with somebody might not translate well. So just something to keep in mind when you're making these records. They are accessible to the public. We're not publishing them on the web, but if somebody comes in and asks for them, there is an obligation to turn responsive records over, provided they're not subject to some exception or redacting. So, does that make sense? Great. I can pause some more or I can keep moving. Ready? Keep going? I'm sorry, see, this is taking a long time. Now, okay, so this is the part where I give credit where credit is due. I didn't make most of these slides, I just typed them up. The bulk of the meat of this presentation comes from the public records and open, I'm sorry, from the Wisconsin Department of Justice Office of Open Government. The link is in these slides and I will send these slides over to the city administrator or I think you already have them. If you want a copy of the slides, I will say what you also have in your materials is from the same agency, the Office of Open Government. There's an open meetings guide and a public records law guide. They're in there. And there's a slew of other resources that are in the packet for tonight. I didn't want to like pull it out and go through it because it's like 300 pages. So I don't think we should do that. I will also mention though that at this link, and you can also just type into Google, you know, Wisconsin Department of Justice Open Government, it'll take you to their website. You can download the searchable PDF of the two guides that are put together. I really like the searchable format because then you can just type a keyword and it can help you navigate that. Again, you don't have to become experts. Come to me and ask me for, with any questions you might have, but those resources are out there as well. So I'm going to just touch a little bit on conflicts. I know it's getting to be a little bit late and see, you wanted more extensive and here you are. So for conflicts, I just want to put some things on your radar. Again, there's materials in your packet, there's a slew of ethics opinions, you can peruse them at your reading pleasure, especially if you're having trouble falling asleep sometimes, I recommend that. Also, just statutes generally, if you ever have trouble sleeping, it's great reading. But something just to keep in mind that, you know, there are provisions in the law as well as our ordinances that prohibit you using your public position or your office to obtain something, either a financial or personal benefit by virtue of your position, either for yourself or for an immediate family or an organization with which you are associated, right? So you can't use your position to benefit yourself or a company that you're associated with. So if ever you're in that situation, for example, if you own a company that does landscaping services and then your company wants to bid on a contract that the city's put out a request for proposals, you can do that, but you want to recuse yourself from anything having to do with discussions of what that, you know, what the terms of the, or the scope of the contract should be, who the best, you know, who the best contractor might be, who to award the contract. I wouldn't talk to the staff about it. I really would just pretend like that topic doesn't exist. Frankly, I'd probably leave the room when those conversations are happening if I were you. But certainly, you don't want to participate in discussion and you don't want to participate in the vote of doing that. We have a number of ordinances. I'm not going to go through every single one. I just want to put them kind of on your radar for you. They're also in your packet and the entire chapter 14 is in there. So incompatible activities generally, so engaging in business that's incompatible with the discharge of your duties. Disclosure of confidential information, so this would go to using information that you obtain by virtue of your position. Or for example, confidential information that might be discussed in like a closed session, for instance, and using it to advance the financial or either private interests of yours that are contrary to the city's interests. This was one I think we should probably touch on, you know, gifts. So you can't accept gifts that you're, from a person who's interested in dealings with the city, or you really don't want to accept gifts that you receive by virtue of your office. So I guess, you know, my example for that is somebody offers you tickets to the Frosty Ball, is that still a thing? Or some fundraiser, right? Because you're like a fancy elected official, you know, flattering, absolutely, but you really shouldn't accept those. Now, if somebody wants to offer you Costco samples because you happen to be shopping at Costco, they're not giving them to you because you're an alder. Even if they know that you're an alder, they're available to everybody. So if it's available to everybody and they're giving away free, you know, pens at the bank or at a ribbon cutting or whatever, great. But if you're only getting this offer because you're an alder or you're on board or you're a city administrator and you're invited to a special event by that virtue, oh, it's an all-exclusive trip to, you know, Hawaii for a couple of weeks, unfortunately, better turn that down. We do have an event attendance section that specifically authorizes staff and elected officials to participate in a kind of, the kind of events that are deemed in the, you know, best interest of the public. So ribbon cuttings and grand openings and seminars and workshops and conferences, appreciation luncheons, all of that kind of stuff. So that's, we have an ordinance that deals with that. We can accept food and items that are nominal or incidental to the events that are deemed in the public interest that are covered by this ordinance. Again, chapter 14 in its entirety is in your ordinances. Talk to me if you have questions or specific questions because I'm sure something will arise, you know. Again, I just want to put this on your radar so that you know, oh, is this a problem? Is this an issue? And if so, pick up the phone and call me. As I mentioned before, if you're recusing yourself, abstaining from participation in the discussion, as well as the vote itself, I want to touch on perceived conflicts too because I've had this issue come up a few times over the years. There may be times where you don't, there isn't a technical conflict of interest, but for whatever reason you may choose to recuse yourself, that's perfectly fine. You don't have to recuse yourself in those situations, but you can. So some examples of that might be, so immediate family is a member, it's like your spouse or your offspring, for example, and this is like a second cousin or a third uncle or twice-remover, what have you. But some distant family member, but you still don't want to participate in awarding contract to their business, for instance. You can certainly do that. Or you work for a company that's bidding on this project and you're not on that account and you're not benefiting financially at all from that, you're not commission-based and there's really no reason why you can't vote on it, but once again, you would just prefer not to vote because of the perception. You can certainly do that as well. You don't have to. But I'm just putting it out there because I've had people ask me, well, can I recuse myself if I don't want, if I don't have to recuse myself, can I still recuse myself or abstain from voting? And the answer is yes.
Do we need to make public record that we're abstaining or is it enough to just not vote? Like, you know, last night, there were hundreds of opportunities seemingly to say aye or nay, but never was there, did anybody ask for extensions?
You know, I would defer to use your judgment if you want. If it's a big enough deal and you think it's really contentious, you may want to make a record of that. The other thing you may want to do is just, you know, you can say to the mayor, you can tell the administrator, city attorney, I'm abstaining. You can make a record, but I don't think you have to draw attention to it. Again, you know, just use your judgment and see as appropriate. And if you have a situation that's coming up that you want to talk about ahead of time, certainly you can talk to me too. I've handled a variety of issues. You know, I've had people who say, "Well, you know, I'm a Realtor and this is, you know, this has to do with real estate and kind of how do we talk through that?" And so if you call me with your fact-specific situation, we can kind of talk through the facts and figure out the best way to handle that and I'm happy to do that too.
I think the one way to deal with that is in a voting situation, any alder can request a roll call vote. And at the roll, when the roll call comes to you, you can just say you declined to vote or you're abstaining.
Yeah, that's certainly something you can do as well.
Also, after the vote, and I have done this on a couple of occasions in the distant past, where after a vote happened, I would specifically ask that my vote, no on whatever the item was, be recorded in the minutes as a no vote.
Oh, sure. You could say, "I asked that the record reflect that I abstained from this vote," or something like that. But again, I don't think you're required to do that, but that's certainly something you can do if you have a concern. And then as far as gifts, just again, ask yourself, why am I getting this? Am I getting this because I just happen to be in a place where they're giving away free things? Or am I getting this because I'm an elected official with tremendous decision-making authority? And I think, you know, you can probably figure out from there. If it's, you know, if it's something because of your position, say no. If it's available to everybody at the event or everybody, and the event is open to the public and not just elected officials, or if it's, you know, equivalent of Costco samples or free squishy cows at the bank opening or what have you, that's fine to accept. So you don't have to take pains to not receive something for free that every other member of the community could get, just not things that you're getting solely by virtue of your position. Does that make sense? I am wrapping it up. Roberts rules. Tons of resources out there. I think there, for our newest alder, there's a League of Municipalities Government 101 that will touch on Roberts rules as well. There are a number of materials or a number of kind of handouts in your materials that deal with Roberts rules. Most of you are fairly familiar. The important thing that I guess I will just touch on briefly is that the process is in place to maintain decorum and an orderly meeting and a predictable meeting that the public can follow and that you can kind of navigate as well and to have a process in place. It's important to maintain decorum. I trust all of you will treat each other with kindness and respect and empathy. And I'll just remind you that that's not just the nice thing to do and the kind thing to do, but it's also required by Roberts rules of order. You know, personal attacks are prohibited. You can absolutely vehemently disagree with each other on policy, but you really can't attack people for their substance. So you may not like someone's idea, but please still be polite, civil, courteous, respectful of each other. You know, it's important. Wait to, obviously, wait to be recognized when you're speaking at a meeting and follow those processes. I think you probably already know, you have to, you know, a matter has to be moved and seconded. to, you know, a matter has to be moved and seconded and so on. I did include this handy-dandy chart of 20 parliamentary motions. Again, it's in your handouts. I don't expect you to read that. I just kind of put it up there. Yeah.
One thing that I've encountered with Roberts rules specifically in commissions where there's public members, is there's typically a lot of confusion about how an official motion happens and what happens with an amendment. And it's something that I have to navigate as a council member. I experience it pretty frequently in councils, so I typically know how things go. But it seems like the chairs of commissions are not adequately prepared, in my opinion, to handle actual official votes. Like, we can go through agendas and have discussion topics, but it was, it's an actual resolution that needs to get voted on and or amended. There seems to be, at least amongst some people, confusion. And that's concerned me. And I don't know what, what the, if we need a special training or a video to kind of explain, like, generally how things flow. But it seems to always go well in council, cause there's enough experienced people that, you know, we figure it out together, Tracy and Chad kinda figure it out. But I've just, I've seen issues come up in coun, commissions.
Yep, that's, that's been a topic of discussion and kind of how do we provide that as a resource. And we're gonna work on putting together or maybe identifying some, either from the league or, or recording something in-house.
I actually think like, like saying the, cause it's like you have the written things, right? But it's like walking through like a theoretical motion and how it goes and how an amendment works and what the order is. Like actually like saying the words is I think the thing that people have a hard time understanding. Like, they can read the document, but in, in practice, they don't always know how to actually run it. So I just wanted to bring it up, cause I've seen it quite a lot.
Like a mock council meeting?
Yes, like a mock, yeah, exactly, exactly. And cover the couple of things that people, that it's not just a straight vote, when it's a little bit more complicated.
So all, all of our committees have a council member, and there's also a staff contact. So maybe the staff contacts need some training on that also. Cause I mean, we, we, we can certainly guide the process along and say, you know, this is how it's supposed to be done. But, you know, the staff contact who presumably is taking the minutes of the meetings should be able to kinda push things in the correct, in the, you know, in at least a procedural direction that gets things done the way they're supposed to be done.
I think that's generally true, but sometimes sta, I mean, we have a lot of turnover with staff too. So I've been in meetings where it's a brand-new staff member and there's confusion about, and it's, the simple things are fine. It's, it's when there's like a more complicated thing happening with an amendment, is when it, was when it comes up. And, and I actually don't think that all the staff members maybe feel completely comfortable either, especially when they're new. So I agree that like the staff can help, but sometimes we have, we have fresh staff pretty frequently, so.
Well, we, we sh, we should be able to put together, I mean, I, it's astounding that this is coming up now, cause we've had these committees for years, years and years and years and years. And it seems like this should already be happening, but maybe we need just like a, you know, I don't think we, it requires a, I don't even know it requires a video, but I think just some, you know, eight or 10-page thing that, so people can walk through it and see how it works.
I know that Madison Council does like a mock meeting. I don't think that would necessarily be necessary for us because of our staggered terms, but maybe just an idea is maybe some sort of a mock meeting for all new committee members that people could potentially attend. That's just a thought.
So I've been jotting some notes here as we've made this, had this discussion. And we're continuing, as you can see and see tonight, to evaluate our onboarding process for not just alders, but also our committee, commission, and board members as well. So it's going to be an ongoing process over the next, you know, probably couple of election cycles and appointment cycles, so to speak, as we look to hone it down. I think some contributing factors are obviously, Jay, you mentioned, you know, we've had, had a lot of committees and commissions for some time. I think we're up close to 30 different commission and committees and, and boards at this point in time, which means, you know, on average, you know, there's what, three to five people per committee and commission? So, you know, we've got as many as 100 different people who are in some various stage of, of service and appointment. And as Alder Gerhardt has mentioned, you know, the staff has had some turnover as well. So there are a variety of different co, contributing factors to this. And unfortunately, nothing does exist, at least at this local level. So that's on my list of things to continue to enhance and we'll, we'll look for more resources that we can provide to staff and committee, commission members.
So back in the day, all the committee and commission members were invited to this meeting. And I remember having meetings in here where there were 100 people here, who were all people who were invited to, who are serving on different committees and commissions, so they could get this information. Apparent, and, and I'm guessing from the last couple of years that we don't invite them to this meeting anymore, but maybe that's something that we should start doing, is making sure that committee and commission members get, because all this stuff that we're talking about applies to people who are citizen members on committees and commissions also. So they should have this information as well. So maybe we should be inviting them in, at, in future years.
And they do currently receive a packet of this information. I think what we've done the last year, couple of years, how long, how long have we done that, Chad, where we shared the recording of this presentation with?
Yeah, and, and the existing packet is, is due for refreshing as well and ensuring that it's current and reflects what's happening.
Well, it's, it's also 200 pages. And, you know, that's a TLDR, man. No, no one's gonna read 200 pages. But sitting in an hour meeting, that's something you might be able to get a lot of people to do.
Does, does the league not offer anything? I mean, I would think that they would.
They may. We're still, you know, as I'm transitioning into this role, continued here, you know, we're getting more and more involved at the league. I've been participating in their monthly roundtable conversations and becoming more familiar with the resources that the league offers. And in fact, I'll be handing out a few of those resources at the end of my presentation.
Um, I, I just wanna reiterate that, like, some sort of a mock training with interactive features, maybe just a better learning style for the average citizen member of a committee. I mean, I could see it facilitated really well if we get the right people. And even if we set a date and everybody can't make it, it would just be a good opportunity for, you know, new and returning members.
I'll put a plug in, Valerie, for the article that you included in the 200 and whatever page packet here, Bad Meeting Behavior Painting the Shed Red by Dan Hill. It's three pages, and I think that's the most succinct summary of Roberts rules that I've come across in, in recent months, as I've, you know, prepared for this role. This is the best thing I've, I've read on the topic. I mean, three pages and it covers the basics. It'll get you going.
I'm glad you find it useful. The league has great resources and that's precisely why I included it. And I should add, I apologize that the packet is so lengthy. What I've done is I've included the Open Meetings Guide and the Public Records Law Guide, which are the bulk of it. So if you take those out, the rest of the information's slightly more digestible. And I would not recommend you read the guide like cover to cover. It's more just there as a resource. It has a table of contents and you can peruse it if you want, or just call me.
I'm, I'm, I was going through it. I was so glad that Jacket Gate is still a relevant topic.
Comes up. Well, with that, if there are no more questions, that concludes my presentation. Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. Well, we shall move on to overview of council resources with our city administrator.
So Valerie was the opening act, right? It's like a concert. This is just to get you all warmed up and, and, you know, I'll hopefully deliver a very quick and succinct presentation to send you home. And if there are any questions, much like Valerie has mentioned, feel free to share those or offer those during the time in which I'm speaking. I have also mentioned, or in the agenda have, that we'll have some question time at the end. So for anybody that does not have my contact information, the vast majority of you do, but my email address and phone number are, are listed there. And much like Valerie, I do have an open door policy. Sometimes my days are filled back-to-back meetings throughout the day and you may not necessarily see me there, but every now and then, if you poke your head in there, you might actually see me in the office and you are more than welcome to, to stop in, call or email at any time. So from the agenda of the items that I'd like to cover tonight, I do wanna give a little bit more than just the resources that are available. I'd like to talk about department overview and staffing, our department heads, agenda information, city council meetings and resources, the city council role, all their conduct, committees, commissions and boards, and then questions. And I'll preface this all right now by saying I've got less than 20 sl, slides. So you don't have to feel like you're gonna be buckled in for the long haul, particularly since we were here till after 11 o'clock last night. So I'll save you the, the, the begrudging, like, how long is this gonna go? So from a department overview and staffing, it's just as a quick slide to show the number of departments that we have and divisions, and that we have over 190 full-time employees in the city right now. And when you factor in our part-time employees and LTEs, we have over 250 employees in the city. There are 17 departments. Four of those department heads report directly to the mayor. That's the police chief, fire chief, the city attorney, and the city administrator. Thirteen of the department heads report to me. And then the municipal court reports to our municipal judge. We did have a conversation last night about the municipal judge. Did you need to share any information about that at all, Valerie?
Well, I'd be happy to do that. I actually shared that information with Alder Allen earlier today. We did have an update to our ordinances. And so our, currently, our ordinances do require a law license and five years of admission to the state bar for the municipal judge position.
But that is not a state statutory requirement. That's a special Fitchburg thing.
It is not. Well, I, it's, I mean, a number of municipalities require that as well. I wouldn't say Fitchburg is unique in that, but it is a, a municipal requirement, not a state imposed one.
Yeah, but Judge Jay just rolls off the tongue.
Not nearly as much as Judge Judy does.
Yep, that ordinance update was done approximately five years ago.
Thank you, Valerie. So I'll carry on here with continuing on the overview of departments and staffing. If you are interested in the description of each of our departments, our employee handbook, which is available on the city website, pages 11 through 13 actually provides a brief summary of each of the city's departments for your information. As you may know, our city is also served by EMS district, Fitrona EMS specifically. That's a combined district with the cities of Fitchburg and Verona, as well as the town of Verona. And we also, in case you are unaware, have a multi-jurisdictional public safety information system, which is oftentimes referred to as MPSIS. That's a venture between the Fitchburg, Sun Prairie, Middleton, Manona, and Verona Police Departments for shared records management and other technologically related items. And that has been in place now for probably about 20 years. So it's a great collaboration that's been happening for quite some time. When you talk about department heads and staff, they are trained and experienced professionals in their field. They are responsible for the day-to-day operations and those are the folks that I work with to ensure that the operations of the city are carried out and that the policies and directions from the mayor and the city council are also implemented. I encourage you to contact our department heads to learn about the department operations, what might be going well in their particular department or throughout the city, what could be areas of improvement, not only in their department, but throughout the city. Ask them about any operational considerations in their specific department, existing processes and functions, any proposals for new programs or initiatives that, that they may have or that you may want to run by them. And certainly, I would encourage you to contact them if you have any proposals for new ordinances. They can often provide a, a great resource and feedback and perspective when you're exploring those things. Our staff and department heads all act in our, or make recommendations to, to the council and alders with the best interests of the city in mind. And if you do reach out to our alder, or I'm sorry, to our staff, either department heads or other staff, if you do that by email, I would appreciate being included in that email correspondence. I have asked our department heads and staff that if they do reply to emails, to include me in that, just so I have an understanding of what might be potential questions, comments, concerns, or other operational considerations due to my role as being responsible and aiding out the caring of the, the day-to-day operations. I'll pause right now in case there are any questions? No? All right, I'll keep breezing through. City council meetings, second and fourth Tuesday of the month at 7:30 PM. Generally speaking, the first meeting in July and the second meeting in December are not held due to their proximity to holidays. The committee of the whole is held the fourth Wednesday of the month at 7:00 PM. And as Alder Allen mentioned last night briefly, typically November and December due to holidays, may not have committee of the wholes. A quorum of the common council equals six alders. And if you are not able to make a council meeting or committee of the whole, please notify the mayor, the council president, the city clerk, and/or the city administrator if you are not going to be able to make it. That helps us know if there are any sorts of quorum considerations that we need to be aware of. There's something that might be important, such as a two-thirds budget amendment or some other notable item where quorum is going to be specifically critical. That is definitely information we'd like to know in advance. And we do get that short, or that things come up on short notice. So don't feel like you have to, you know, let us know 48 hours in advance. We do recognize that life happens and illnesses and injuries and, you know, those emergencies pop up.
Since you didn't put it on there. So, and this is just for your benefit, Bill. The, the committee of the whole is basically the council and the mayor. A quorum of this body consists of five people. So we have to have five people to hold a meeting. This body doesn't have the capacity to take any kind of binding action. So that would have to be held over to a council meeting. But we use this as kind of work sessions to discuss things that might be coming up, that might be relevant.
Thank you for covering that. I might have another slide, or at least another bullet point or two for next year.
Excellent.
So agenda information. The city council meeting agenda and packet is posted to the city's website on the Friday before the Tuesday meeting. The agenda obviously has a purpose. As we all know, Valerie touched on some of that through the, her presentation, but it provides structure to facilitate efficient and effective use of our meeting time, and it satisfies the subject matter and notice requirements of Wisconsin's Open Meetings Law. If a subject is not on the agenda, we cannot lawfully discuss it or act on it as a body. The agenda packet contains supplemental information for agenda items. You'll oftentimes see a referral sheet, which is a brief overview and/or background of the agenda item. There are supporting documents oftentimes included with the agenda items. So that could be things like permits and license applications, development plans, contracts, staff memos, those sorts of things. And then there's oftentimes a resolution for the vast majority of agenda items. That basically is the direction that the council would be given, giving, or the action taken by the council. Go ahead.
Okay, step back just one slide there. So you, you touched on something that Valerie mentioned too. We do have on the agenda, public appearances for non-agenda items. You specifically said, we cannot lawfully discuss anything that's not on the agenda. So how does that work? So somebody shows up, they say a few words, and then what recourse do we have following their speech?
Yeah, so I have a little bit about this in another slide, but I'll go, I'll go right to it now, since you brought it up. So we do agenda it as public appearances for non-agenda items. So that does provide the public with a regular opportunity to come before this body and talk about what they may wish to talk about, that they want the city council to hear. So they are oftentimes, they are provided with three minutes to share that information. And since it's not an item that's been agended for discussion, we can't have a back and forth between a council member or council members and the person presenting that information. If the council as a body, or the mayor and two alders, would like to talk about that particular item that was brought up by a member of the public at a future meeting, you can work with staff to get it agended. And then that would allow the, the council to have a, have a discussion on that item, potentially invite people back in to speak about it. So you could have that back and forth and take any action that you may deem appropriate. Any, anything else on that?
Thank you.
You bet. So back to the packet. And if you do have- So, back to the packet, and if you do have any questions or clarifications in advance of a meeting regarding any agenda item, I do urge you to contact either department head or me with any questions that you do have. It allows us to gather information for you to help maybe clarify questions that you have, might make the meeting a bit more efficient, and it also allows the department head or me to be able to be prepared to answer a question if you specifically want to ask something that is recorded on the record, so to speak, then we have that information available, instead of having to say, "Well, you know, I'll get back to you with that." And then, if you want to add items to the agenda, as I just covered, the mayor, two alders, a formal motion by council, and then, those are the three main ways in which to get items added to the agenda. If you would like to add an agenda item, we do ask that those be submitted by 8:00 AM on the Wednesday before the council meeting, so that gives staff basically about a day, business day and a half, to evaluate those and get those entered into on-base and all the supporting documents, which isn't generally a lot of time, to be honest with you, just because of all the other day-to-day duties and things that are being carried out.
I have a question.
Sure.
It was like at 12:00, it used to be, that we can submit an agenda, so now this is 8:00 in the morning, is something new?
So, I, we have 12:00 on Thursdays for staff.
Yeah.
That's for staff, yep. And my understanding is, I think I gave you bad information a few weeks back, because I was corrected by another staff member that says for elected officials, it's Wednesdays. If it's truly important, and not to say that some are more important than others, or if they're time-sensitive, just call, and we can try to work things through. But generally speaking, as a courtesy to staff, and to allow them to work these things into their days, it's a heavy lift if you submit something on a Thursday morning, for instance, for staff to try to get that processed, and evaluated, and assessed, and put together.
Oh, okay, but if we have already discussed with, you know, the staff, we have something already drafted, you know what I mean, like?
That could make it a bit easier to...
To, we can, we can extend, extend. Okay, okay, okay.
Yeah. And I think the key point on that is, the earlier you reach out to staff, you know, weeks even, if you want to start, depending on how complex and complicated something may be, the sooner you can get staff on board with the conversation and getting the background information and things worked out, the better and more smoothly things tend to flow on to the agenda. So, again, I would encourage you to contact me or any department head if you have assistance needs or questions or perspective related to agenda items. What you'll see on the agenda, and again, I know that this is a bit of repetitive nature for many of you, because a lot of you have been on council for several years now, but thought it would be good just to cover this, and these are some things that could potentially be utilized when we're talking about committees and commission members to a certain extent. Consent agenda is routine matters. Those are single motion, seconded and adopted by a majority vote to approve, and all matters are done typically at one time on the consent agenda. And alder may request removal of an item or items if they so desire to be separated from the consent agenda and discussed and acted upon separately. So, you do have that ability if there is an item or two or more on the consent agenda that you would like to specifically discuss and have acted on separately. Go ahead.
Just wanted to add something for Bill. So, consent agenda, the typical reason why I've ever pulled something off the agenda would be if there's an error in the minutes that I wanted to correct before we accept it, or I want to pull a resolution and refer it to an additional committee that was not referred on the sheet, or, I mean, potentially, I guess theoretically, you could try to change the return-by-date for whatever reason. But those are the kind of the reasons you'd pull something off the consent agenda, because we can't discuss it, but there are reasons why you might want to pull it. We can't actually discuss the content, but we can discuss the procedure of how that item returns to council.
I have another question. In some committees, they review the agenda, you know, for the meeting. I mean, other committees, they don't do that, so I, is there is, we are not following consistency of how we should present this meeting, because sometimes in committees, like, they say, "We are going to review the agenda," so is anyone want to bring something forward, or, you know, I mean, because we have people waiting, you know? So, but there are other committees that there is, it's not, nothing. So, can this something that we can see and maybe be consistent with all the commissions? Agenda, you know what I mean? Like, if we are going to use, review the agenda, we use it with all the committees, or if we are not going to do it, but it's not consistency, this is what I want to say.
Sure. That is something that could be considered. The chair does have some discretion as to setting the agenda, so I, you know, operating under the assumption that the commissions or committees that are using that, the chair at one point in time has identified that as how they'd like the agenda to be set. And again, it's something we can consider doing as we look to do more onboarding of committees, commissions, and board members, making that suggestion. The next bullet point, referrals and direct referrals. The vast majority of items that are referred out at a council meeting are, they're referred out, they go to committees and commissions, and then they come back for action at the next council meeting. So, for instance, last night, on the consent agenda, there were, you know, eight or 10 items that went referred out, and then those will come back for action on the May 9th city council meeting. Occasionally, there are direct referrals. Direct referrals are done with the approval of the mayor. Those are items that are going to be acted upon at the meeting in which they're referred at. So, if we would have had a direct referral last evening, there would have been discussion, and ultimately, a request for action to be taken. Those are usually done on a limited basis and primarily due to time sensitivity issues.
I just looked it up, because there was confusion. So, in our ordinances, section 467, item B, it says that if, if an item is submitted to be placed on the agenda, it can be done so 24 hours prior to the distribution deadline, which would be Friday at noon, so that would be Thursday at noon, if it's, if everything is assembled in the correct format. If it's not, then it would be 48 hours. So, I think Julia's right, that it was noon, and it still technically is according to our ordinance, so if we want to change this, we should probably change the ordinance.
So, I covered the public comment on non-agenda items. I think we took care of that one. City council resources. So, as Valerie mentioned, you are all issued a city email account. You can contact IT if you have specific issues or questions related to that account, and there is an automated password reset if you do have issues with login. All you need to do is go to Office 365 and click on "Forgot my password," and it will help automate the reset process. I would encourage all of you, if you have not already, to sign up for notifications on our city website. I'll try to see if I can do a quick screen share, so you can look and see what I'm talking about. And I'll probably have to stop, Scott, and then start over. Is that correct?
Possibly.
Looks like that's the case. So, hang on one second, please. So, you should be able to see the city website pop up, and then there's a little box called "Notify Me" on the left-hand side that my cursor is circling over. If you click on that "Notify Me" box, it will allow you to then enter in an email address, and you can scroll down through this list of things that you might want to be notified of, either by email or text message. Those things include agendas, projects, media or news releases, events that might be put out in the city, you know, those sorts of things. You can see we had a Town of Madison attachment for notifications, you know, there's Stoner Prairie Park planning project, public safety alerts, and then, you know, looking at calendars and those sorts of things, news flashes. So, I would encourage you to peruse that list and determine if there are things in there that you might find of interest for either yourself, or perhaps even sharing with your constituents. It's a way that we probably have under-advertized as a way to stay informed of what's happening from a city government perspective. Yeah?
Yeah, and so, new notification opportunities will periodically arise there, so it's up to the individual person. It's not like they say, "Oh, what are you talking about? I signed up for notifications two years ago." They're going to have to come back and see what the new stuff is.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for bringing that up, because, you know, for instance, like the Lacy Road Project, we may possibly add, you know, an ability to receive alerts when there's closures or those sorts of things, you know, some of those more significant road projects, we may do that. So, that's a great, great reason, as you mentioned, to check back periodically, to see if there may be something new of interest. Oops, let me go back here. I will also mention, I might as well, should have kept my screen saved to be shared on the city website, because I was also going to point out, there is a council resource page as well. There, it's coming up. So, council resource, and it looks like you can see that what the address is. I don't know why there's a 1873/councilresource, but I'm going to operate under the assumption if you go into the search field here and put in council resource, you'd be able to come up with this webpage. So, you can see some of the items that are listed here on this particular webpage. There are other things that you may want to take a look at. I know Alder Gerhart pointed out, there's a section for maps in here. There's also, on the city website, there's also organizational charts located in, I think, the human resources section. So, there are a variety of different informational pieces that are available here that I encourage you to take a look at. And if you can't find something on our website, because I do recognize and have difficulty at times myself locating things, give me a call, send me an email, and I can work to try to...
To try to...
Find that information.
Hey, Chad?
Yeah?
Yeah.
Can I make a request? I know, oh, maybe a year back, you had that sort of GIS map, where you can sort of toggle with school districts, and, you know, that includes demographics, you can break it down by districts. Is it possible to put a link to that on this council resource page?
I would guess that that should...
I would guess that that should...
Let me check with our GIS specialist and IT personnel, and I can see if we can get that added.
I don't know if it's possible to pull up the map just to show, because there's, it's, it's great now. I mean, it was good before, but they've, Dakota's done a lot of work to make this way more functional than it was before. I actually think if you just search GIS in the, in the search bar, I think that's how I typically find it when I look at the GIS map.
So, there's also a link on the bottom of the main page, too? You can hit the GIS and mapping? And...
The public map is where I find most things, but the planning application viewer I find is really functional, and I hadn't been using it until recently.
Mm-hmm.
And the Fitchburg public map, there's like so many different layers that you can, and anyone can find out all sorts of different things about their neighborhood. It's incredible.
Yeah, if you...
It's a good resource.
I won't spend a lot of time on this for the purposes of this meeting, but just from a reference standpoint, this GIS map that's public viewing has all kinds of different layers within it that you can play around with to obtain different bits of information that you may be interested in learning more about, so. And again, if you have specific requests, let me know, and I can work with Dakota Dorn to try to help get that information that you might be seeking. It's possible we may have it, it just may not be in a public, public map at this point in time, or it could be potentially an idea for enhancing an existing map. I'll go back to the presentation here, bear with me. Okay, and then finally, city staff also can certainly be a resource for you, questions, feedback, perspective, how does things work, so to speak, in their particular department. Feel free to reach out to city staff, department heads in particular. So, I won't go into the statutes specifically, but I did want to point out that the city government and common council, those are all covered under chapter four of our Fitchburg ordinances. You can see some of the specific ordinances that I've highlighted in the sections, form of government, composition of city council, rules, quorum, powers of the city council, and then the standing committees, which would be the committee of the whole, finance, personnel, public safety, and human services. Committees, commissions, and boards, those are all covered, generally speaking, under chapter six of our ordinances. I think it's important to note that the vast majority of committees, commission, and boards are advisory to the city council and do not have authority to pass legislation, set policy, or direct staff. There is a staff contact assigned to each of the committees, commission, and boards, and also, generally speaking, at least one alder. I would encourage you to speak with staff contacts for the committees, commissions, and boards you are a member of for information on any current activities or items that that board may be taking up. This is always a good time to reach out, and I've also asked our staff contacts to reach out to their new committee and commission members just to introduce themselves, but it does allow for a good opportunity to kind of connect one-on-one and learn about some of the things that that particular board or committee or commission has been talking about, and what is planned for the upcoming meetings here. I also would encourage you, as the alder representatives, to, to these committees and commissions, to help, you know, be the eyes, ears, and overseer to a certain extent, and recognize and assess when programs, initiatives, and ordinances may have an impact on city operations and finances, a disparate impact on others, or unintended consequences if not fully vetted. There are a number of things that can get brought up that, you know, really require a wide-ranging look at them to ensure that we are not creating unintended consequences, that it's not a negative impact on city operations, that our financial picture allows it to happen, and that there aren't, isn't a disparate impact on others. In the homestretch, folks, so bear with me here, alder role and conduct, your individual role lies within your vote. Independently, you lack authority, you need to act as a body, which we'll talk about in the last bullet point. It would be improper and also potentially illegal for any individual alder to unilaterally order a direct staff to do something you want, or to represent the city's interests or position when you're not authorized to do so. You do need to work with your fellow alders to adopt rules, policies, resolutions, ordinances, and set priorities at a published and accessible public meeting, as our city attorney had talked about earlier. Your responsibility is significant. You are making decisions on behalf of the residents of the city, and your decisions may impact the community for decades to come in certain situations. You have a responsibility to comply with those items that Valerie had covered, ethics laws, conflicts of interest, open records laws, open meetings laws. I won't go into any of those things. Valerie covered those in detail. And then she also touched on this when we talk about Robert's Rules, but respect is clearly important as we all interact with one another. Disagreement and debate are certainly healthy components of our democracy and should take place, but the respect for community members, city staff, and one another is critically important. Demeaning, sarcastic, telling others how to do something, and other unprofessional behaviors are not productive or really acceptable. Please, also, I ask you not to involve staff in political issues or matters at the local level. That is very difficult position for staff to be placed in, and unfair to them. And the actions of this body, as you all probably know, do have an impact on our city's employee recruitment and retention efforts. I would encourage you to follow the golden rule, treat others as you would wish to be treated in similar situations, and your actions and conduct set the tone for our community and our organization here at City Hall. Closing, I am going to hand out a few items from the League of Municipalities. Alder Maldonado, I'll just have one left at your chair for you, if you wouldn't mind passing those out, and then Jay, if you wouldn't mind passing those out as well. Basically, what I have included is a pocket guide to Wisconsin's open... Basically, what I have included is a pocket guide to Wisconsin's open meeting laws, a pocket guide to Wisconsin State Ethics Code, and pecuniary interest prohibitions. And then finally, a little booklet that's been put together by the League of Wisconsin Municipalities titled, So You've Been Elected. It's a short booklet. It's about 16 pages long. I would encourage you to take a look at that. I think there is some useful information. Then there's also a link to the, to the league website and references to the resources that they provide. So finally, I, along with all of city staff, look forward to continue to work with you and to serve our community and do the best that we can in the interest of our community. So, questions? Yes? Sure.
Sometimes it's confusing, you know, when we have some topics that we discuss as a common council, they are kind of like dicey. We receive a lot of emails, you know? So what is the protocol when we receive, the mayor or some of the alders receive those emails? Do we need to read them in the meeting? And if we need to read them, we need to read the whole email, or we need to read the name of the person that sent the email, and if in favor or against the topic in the agenda? That one is, it was a confusion, and I want to know if this applies to committees, because we have an issue in park committees, park committee like one or two months ago regarding this topic.
So I think I'll start the answer on this, and Valerie Bell means if you want to hop in whenever I've stopped and add anything or further clarify anything, you're more than welcome to do so. The, the council has not established a formal policy on this, and I think that perhaps that is something that if the council would like to consider, we can certainly have staff to draft some ideas on what a policy might look like. I know a number of municipalities have policies in place regarding public comment and how they also treat things like emails. There is no expectation for anyone that if you send an email that it is read or that their names are mentioned. That is not a requirement. That merely ends up being a policy call by the body, or in this case, whomever is running the meetings. So obviously, depending upon the number, it can get a little bit dicey if we're going to say we're going to read every email, right? Perhaps it could be something as simple, and again, this is a policy that I think this, this body should, should really strongly consider implementing. Could be something along the lines of, you know, we received 57 emails in the last two weeks regarding this particular topic. Forty-seven of them were in favor, 10 were not. All of those emails have been shared with, with the elected officials. That could be a simple way, an efficient way to handle those sorts of things. There is no requirement to even mention how many emails we've received. That's just, could be something that this body may wish to do in a transparent.
Because I remember that Mayor Richardson, in a couple of meetings, he said, I want to read only the first five emails, and I know that some people got upset because they send the email in advance to be read. You know what I mean? So this is what I said, we need to be consistent with our process and procedure, you know? And then if we are going to create a policy, you know, because some people are sending videos, too, you know what I mean? So what is going to be the policy, you know what I mean? So maybe something that we can.
Agree. That's why I think that it's, it's time because of all the different ways in which folks can potentially communicate, to create that consistency across not just the council but committees and kitchen. I think it would be helpful to have a policy that's, that's been passed by this body.
And the other thing that was brought to my attention in, in one of the parks committee meeting is that, you know, we usually hear a council, we say people have only three minutes to speak. So someone say, that one is only, is for council meeting, it's not for committees. So this is, you know what I mean? So this is a consistency, you know? So maybe, you know?
Well, on, on that, I think the chair of whatever committee can set the rules.
No, I know, but then you have some member that they say that, you know, it's not fair that the chair set the rules because if that person wants to have the wrong rule, you know what I mean? So this is what I said.
The chair, the chair set a lot of rules. That's, that's the whole point of having a chair, is that they can set certain rules.
But sometimes, like Gabrielle said, we have a lot of new chair that they don't know how to run the meeting, the meeting, and they don't know all these procedures.
Yeah, and we can, we, we should probably just sit down and provide some kind of short, you know, eight or 10 pages is enough of how, how a meeting works. I think we can do that.
And if there was a policy that has been adopted by this body, that could be included in that, that packet of information?
As, as far as the emails, you know my view on listening to people read. So I, I think it's, I think, I think if, you know, if somebody has something that they want read, that's not a, that's not really an option. I mean, yes, Aaron used to read all these emails that would come in from people, and I just think that's a waste of time. We, we as council members have the emails because they've all been sent to all of us. We have them, and they can be appended to the minutes of the meeting, and, and that's how they can get distributed to other people. But I don't, I don't, I just don't see the need to read emails.
Well, there are some people that they cannot attend to the meeting, and maybe they want their voice to be heard, so, you know, they send the email.
We have an option, we have an option for them to attend the meetings by Zoom. So there's, there's plenty of ways that people can attend the meetings and present their opinion without expecting someone else to read an email. Go ahead, Gabrielle.
Yeah, I think part of the thing is that when this first started, it was during the pandemic, and we didn't have a consistent Zoom policy. We didn't have, there was not a lot of clarity about how people could have their voice be heard. So I think that's where the reading started, and it made sense at the time. But I think there is something to be said, so that we have a form at the back of the room, right, where people register if they're coming physically to the building, and they can choose to write a short phrase about what they believe. And I believe it's more than just support or oppose. Like, I think people have made a short statement about what, what they think of an item that can be read by the chair instead of them coming up to the speak. So if we offer that in person, there's something to be said for maybe we offer that virtually, too, for the people that are on Zoom. I don't know. I, like, I like the idea of being able to allow people to have the same rights that they have if they're physically in the chamber, not in the chamber. And I know the other municipalities have worked on this, like the City of Madison, like they have the support, they have this online registration form where you can say support or oppose, do you want to speak at a meeting? And it's a very straightforward form, and I guess I, I don't myself watch a lot of Madison City Council meetings, but I don't know how that functions like in the meeting itself.
I can assure you that in Madison City Council meetings, the chair is not reading every email.
Certainly not. But I mean, like, in terms of like public record, like someone has been able to register in support or opposition, there's clarity about how that's being, and it's not, if people send an email and they don't know what happens, and we don't include the emails in the public record. That's technically, someone could, someone could do a FOIA request, but like, those emails are not included in the minutes of the.
And that's something we should do. I agree with that. That's something we should do. We should include all the public comment in the minutes. But I don't, I mean, I, I've been to plenty of Madison public hearings, and I've been to Dane County Board public hearings, and you fill out a thing, you register your support. If you don't wish to speak, you're, you get tallied. So they don't go and read, they don't even read the names there. They just say, we also had 65 people registering in support and 39 people registering against. That's because it's, it's just, it's, it's a big expectation, you know, to expect the chair of a meeting to do all that. Or, you know, and I've spent a lot of time, when, when I, when I created the ordinance revision that gave us the consent agenda, the whole idea was we would have the city clerk sit here and read all that stuff, and it's just a waste of time when it's already printed out. So, so I think, I, I think the less reading we do in these meetings, the better off everybody is.
Yeah. I just do think that some people want their words to be part of the public record, and, and having it sent to our emails is not the same as it being part of the public record, in my opinion. And maybe that's, maybe that's not true. I don't know.
Oh, sorry.
Joe, Joe, you had a comment?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think maybe a compromise to this would be when minutes are put together, maybe the emails are compiled in the minutes since they're electronic and they can be included on a PDF document pretty easily.
If I may, Jay? Yes. I think if it's all right with the body here, that it sounds as though based upon the discussion and conversation, that there is a desire to come up with a policy and debate that and discuss it in a properly-agended and published meeting.
Sure. Sounds lovely.
All right.
All right. Are there any other questions for Chad? Bill has one.
Yeah. So as I was going through the list of all of the boards, commissions, et cetera, I started wondering, well, why do we have things called boards and other things called committees and other things called commissions, and there's one that's called an authority? And I've come to the understanding that a board is a body that is empowered to take action, library board, public works, board of review, and a committee is a body made up entirely of the legislature. So that would be like our standing committees, personnel.
Well, we have the bicycle committee.
Well, exactly, but that should be a commission, right? That's my understanding, that anything that's a third-party entity that includes members of, who are, you know, who are not part of the legislative body is properly called a commission. So is that?
No.
So it's you against the internet, Jay.
These are words. Well, so, yeah, not everything you find on the internet is accurate. These are terms that have come about, some of them have come about through statute, and some of them have come about through just Pittsburgh creating its own new committees. So certain, certain committees, Valerie and I were talking about this earlier today, certain committees are tightly governed by the statute. So the Community Development Authority is tightly governed by the statute. Plan Commission is governed by statute. Board of Public Works is governed by statute. There's all these certain, certain committees that, that have certain functionalities that are, that are very tightly controlled by the, by the state statutes. But then we have other things like the, the Commission on Aging Well. That's, that's a Pittsburgh thing. There may, I don't even know if there's another one of those in the state. That's just a commission that we created to deal with certain, mainly it was developed as a support for the senior center. And we have the Parks Commission, and the Parks Commission, I think the Parks Commission is referenced in statute, but it doesn't have the same rigorous definition that, say, the Plan Commission does. So I, I don't know how, I don't know the rhyme or reason as to why certain things are called boards, certain things are called committees, commissions. I know that it's pretty random, and I know that it's not just Pittsburgh. It's random in the statutes. It's random throughout other municipalities as well. If you want to change some of the names, that's fine, but I, you know, it's just one of those things that over time, things have developed the way they've developed. I think most of the newer things, the newer commissions that we have created are called commissions, like the, I think.
There's a tree advisory committee, I think.
Yeah, so.
I was, I was hoping that these were just oversights and that we can all agree on what particular words mean, but it sounds like that's not possible.
Well, it's possible. I mean, we, if you want to come up with a, with an ordinance revision to rename some of them to something more standardized, I'll, I'll support it. It's just at this point, there hasn't been any, the statute doesn't really provide any guidance as to what makes a committee a committee and what makes a commission a commission.
You know, standardizing the names, I don't know that that would really alter the authorities and the duties and the powers of those bodies, which are defined in our ordinances. If I can just add one more, just to end the night with, you know, the Police and Fire Commission is actually called the Board of Police and Fire Commissioners in the statutes. So that's, that's one one to keep in mind. And I would echo Jay's comment. I mean, I think there's, I don't know if random's the right word, but I, I think there's a lack of consistency both in our ordinances and in the statutes. Ultimately, each entity that's created has either, you know, ambition or powers and duties that's either in our ordinances or in the statutes or both. So that's kind of where the power and the structure comes from.
Can I also make a suggestion about the, kind of the website and how everything's listed? I just think for sake of clarity for the public, there should be more plain language description of all the committees and what they do, because, like, if you look at some of them, they're just literally the legal statute of why it exists, but like for an average citizen, I don't think they're going to have any idea, even people that, you know, are well-educated in the area, like, it's just, it, it lacks a little bit of clarity. So I would just say that's maybe something we can consider in the future as well.
All right. Any other questions on this topic? If not, let's move on to our third topic, which hopefully this won't take very long. But I did want to talk about the Committee of the Whole and the stuff that we need to get through over the next year. So in, in doing a little more research into this, I'm getting the sense that we probably aren't going to be able to hold a referendum on, until August of next year, when there will be a, it'll be a primary election for state assembly and state senate. And that, so that'll, that basically gives us about a year and four or five months to, to work on what we want to include in the referendum. Basically, I think the more specifics we can provide to the voters, the better off we will be. So I'd like to have, I'd like to use the June meeting, part of the June meeting, to talk about what things the council would like to see included in the referendum, maybe give staff some time to, to research that, come up with some price, some cost numbers. I suspect most of us have met with the fire department, so we know their concerns. We've had other concerns about transit. There's concerns about staffing, and we have that staffing study that's going to be done sometime around July. So I, I think that would be a time just, just for us to start the discussion of what are we going to ask for in this referendum? Julia?
Yeah, so this is something that I have discussed with Chad and Misty. We are thinking that we need to wait for, you know, to, first of all, to start the discussion of the, if we are going to do a referendum or not, because this is something that this body is going to decide what, what we're going to do. I think we need to wait for the staffing study done, that is going to be done when it July 1st, to have an idea, clear indication of what are going to be the, the staffing needs. And also, we need to wait for the, the Wisconsin budget, because maybe there are some, you know, relief coming through the budget to municipality with, there are a lot of talking about the share revenue. So I think when we, we have to wait for these two items to, to come and to be done, and then I think we can use one of the committee of the, committee of the whole to, to have a sense, to have a discussion about what this body think about, you know? Because maybe there are people here that don't feel comfortable that we're going to a referendum, or what is a referendum, or what is, what is the process of a referendum? Because I need to understand as a mayor, what, how we start that process first, how much it's going to cost, how we are going to reach out to the, because we need to sell this to the, our residents, how we are going to do it. We need to have the data, the information, because I, I, I want to, I think we need to, to drive our decision based on data and needs. So I think that, yeah, this is something that I have discussed with, with Chad and Misty, and I think, yes, I think we need to have a discussion, but I think June, Jay, I think we need to wait maybe July meeting.
Well, we can do it in either one, but I think, I think, yeah, I think one of those, I do think all the things you just brought up are things that need to be discussed. I know the process for doing a referendum, but probably no one else here does. I, I mean, I, so I think, I, I think that's the process of how it's done. I think prioritizing what things we would like to include, and that doesn't mean that we're going to, you know, that doesn't mean if we have this discussion in June, we're going to nail down how much money we're going to ask the voters for, because we won't, we won't know yet. We won't know until we get, we get more information from. We won't know until we get, we get more information from the legislature. But I think it's important to start educating ourselves on what that process is, because, and I'm just concerned that if we wait till July and our window for getting this done for the 2025 budget is going to be August of next year, if we wait till July, we're going to have less than a year to put everything together and get it out to the voters.
But also, we need to identify, you know, I understand all of that, but then we need to, you know, if we are going to do a referendum, we need to hire, you know, a company to run this project, okay? And also, we need to determine also, it's going to involve a lot of staff time, you know what I mean? So, but I think, this is what I say, I, you know, my position is maybe we need to wait for the staffing study and also for the Wisconsin budget, what is going to, is it going to bring any relief to municipality or not? That's it. And then we can have the conversation.
Well, I think the sooner we start the discussion, the better off we'll be, Chad.
I'll offer a suggestion. We were looking, as chatting with staff, about the topics that typically get covered at Committee of the Whole, and I can kind of give a rundown. Obviously, the April meeting, our intent moving forward is to use that April Committee of the Whole to do this presentation from Valerie and I. And then we also typically have a presentation in April or May, and which I think will end up being in May. The Chamber of Commerce is required to provide an annual presentation to the council that's typically been done at the Committee of the Whole. So probably look to do that in May, along with, we always do a CIP process and financial policy conversation with Misty. Both of those items can certainly take up the full agenda in May. June is typically, the entire agenda is spent on our financial management plan. Our financial advisors, Ellers, comes in and talks about the city's financial management plan. What I would propose is that we could ask Ellers, since they are obviously municipal finance advisors, as part of their financial management plan, perhaps they could provide some high-level overview and information about referendum and how they work and how they've seen them utilized in other communities. That could be helpful information for the council to be aware of. We could also potentially ask if there are other revenue sources that other communities have been looking at, such as a transportation utility or other sorts of things. Could be just baseline, high-level information for the council to potentially find valuable. July is typically spent, half of that Committee of the Whole on the operating budget prep with our finance director. I would offer that, if you, if the council would like, we could also spend that meeting talking referendum. We would have, obviously, the higher-level overview from Ellers at the June meeting. We would have the information ideally from Baker Tilly on the staffing study, and then ideally, the state budget will have been passed by July 1st, which would give us an idea of what, if any, modifications have been made to shared revenue in particular. And then the other item that we typically look at is October's Committee of the Whole is spent on operating budget amendments. So that leaves, you know, a handful of other months to tackle other topics, and typically, we try to limit these meetings to two hours and generally, two topics, depending on the complexity and length. So with that in mind, if there is an interest from this body, I can already begin to work on contracting or contacting Ellers to see if they could come in or add to their presentation in June on some of that high-level stuff, and then look, from a staff perspective, to begin preparing for a more in-depth conversation and presentation and discussion at the July meeting, if that works with this body.
I think that would be great.
Okay.
But I do want to, I do want to have an opportunity at one of these meetings for council members to be able to present things that they would like to see included in the Because, you know, the more information we have, the more time staff has to work on this stuff, the better, the better off we'll be. So then, Dave, you had mentioned something that you wanted to have at a Committee of the Whole meeting. You want to run through that quickly?
Yeah. You know, you've seen the bills, you know, for wells on various things we have to do, and we have, you know, we have a lot of wells, different ages, different depths, and I'd like just one meeting where they go through and explain, they show the well, when it was, when it was built, what zone it serves, you know, problems it's had, so where physically it is in the city, you know, I think we could go through that in an hour or less, and so I'd like to have that, that as one, and then possibly, the other thought I had, we got all these vehicles, you know, what are the vehicles for, what department, you know, what age, what are the, you know, continue, we get a referendum, you know, we're replacing this vehicle or that, and it's, I can't keep track of it all, you know, and I know we have a spreadsheet, so it might be good for all the council members to kind of look at it one time and know, all right, you know, we're going to have plow truck replacement or this or that, you know, because I, maybe you can keep track of them all, maybe Chad can, but I can't.
Do we still have that, do we still maintain a spreadsheet with all the city vehicles on it?
So I think a good opportunity for that will take place during the capital improvement budget process. If you take a look through that budget, you'll see that there are replacement accounts that have been established over the last several years for the majority, beginning to be the vast majority of city vehicles and equipment, and each one of those equipment replacement accounts has an associated spreadsheet with it that lists the vehicle or piece of equipment, its estimated cost, its estimated useful life, and then obviously, how much we budget annually in the CIP, so that when it's due for replacement, that money is there. So for instance, if a piece of, a truck is going to last us 10 years and it costs us $3,500 or $35,000, we're setting aside $3,500 a year for that particular truck in that replacement account. So I would encourage you to take a look at the CIP, that should have the vast majority, if not all, of the information, Dave, that you've just mentioned as it relates to vehicles. It may not get into specific detail, you know, what a tractor might be used for specifically. I guess I would, that might be a bit of an item of minutia for day-to-day operations for staff, you know, but if you take a look at that, let me know if you have questions and want to talk about it further at the Committee of the Whole.
All right. Gabriella, you had a number of things you wanted to-
Yeah, I laid out quite a few things. I can send you an email with the list of the things I was thinking, yeah. I also just want to put out there, too, I know we typically do two topics per meeting with the expectation that they're an hour. I see no reason why some topics can't be limited to half an hour and just say, we get half an hour, we're going to talk about this, and then we're done, and then we can have three topics at a meeting. And I also am open to having a Committee of the Whole in November and/or December after the first meeting and, you know, the first Wednesday, sorry, after the first council meetings, that would be the second Wednesday of the month, rather than just canceling it, because obviously, those are holidays, because I do think that there's a lot to be discussed. And the other thing I'll throw out there, too, is, so like, committees work so differently, but I think a lot of the committees that I've been on, they have discussion items, and so RCC will bring in somebody to talk about the geology or the hydrogeology of the city of Pittsburgh, and we have this nice, you know, 30 or 45-minute presentation. You know, that could theoretically be a Committee of the Whole meeting, but also, I think sometimes maybe certain topics where they want to present to the city, maybe they're housed, maybe they're better housed in a committee and that, that presentation could be sent to the council for reference. But certain topics, I'm just, I think we should think about whether or not, at this point in our city's history, with the amount of things that we need to discuss, like, is it a Committee of the Whole topic, or can it be housed somewhere else in the city as a public record that we can refer to? Maybe it's not a council discussion, maybe it's an hour-long council discussion at a Committee of the Whole meeting. Those are a couple of thoughts I had, just more generally speaking about the meetings.
Any thoughts from that end of the table? Jim?
Yeah, I was thinking about yesterday and the selections to different committees and commissions and everything, and you know what Mr. Sierra actually said, talking about process and also equity. I just think we need to talk about maybe codifying something as far as, you know, how long somebody can stay on a commission. I know the mayor, you know, has a lot of, you know, it's decided by the mayor who gets appointed, whatever, but, you know, when we're listening to the inconsistencies that occur between mayor to mayor and everything else like that, because we got calls for people, seemed like they wanted to be on the board forever, and then you got the people who, you know, get retreaded through, you know, and I think if we're going to be talking about equity all the time, we need to get as many people through and as many new people learning about city processes. You know, I just, my last month on the United Way Board was February, and we made a conscious decision that no more this retread, you know, somebody just keep being on the board and you got three years on the board and that's it. And the reason being, we wanted people who are close to the, you know, the people that we are serving to actually be on the board, and I think we just need to codify something. I would like to have a discussion on that, and actually, I'll be willing to author an ordinance, you know, depending on what the discussion to bring before this body. I don't think it should take a long time, like what Gabriella said, that stuff that we can limit to 30 minutes. So if we could get that on the list, I appreciate it.
So you want to term limit, is it what you want to talk?
Term limit, yeah.
Okay.
What is your name? Randy?
Randy. How soon they all forget.
57 happened, so-
Yeah, yeah. I would like to see something on, and Chad's going to roll his eyes, on speeding and stop signs. Two different departments are approached when, whenever I'm approached by a resident speeding on Osmondson, even in Pembroke, on Pembroke, which isn't my district, and on Sine Road, where there is multiple speed limits. But I do get frustrated under trying to understand why a stop sign couldn't be placed at a particular location. I just don't know, understand the engineering behind it or the metrics, I'm going to call it the metrics. I'd like to hear something from the transportation engineer, maybe from Ned, Lieutenant Hartwig, and how he comes up with the information he does, and he does a fabulous job, which must be very time-consuming as well. Because I look out at my court, where there's five homes and I have a stop sign, whereas I get to a larger, busier intersection, and I can't get, I'm sorry, not a yard sign, a stop sign, but when I get to a busier intersection, there is no stop sign. I just like to try and understand that so that I could relay that back to the resident as well.
There is, there is a, there is a book.
Oh, I'm sure there is.
The book is the Manual on Uniform Traffic Controlled Devices.
Yeah.
Jim, do you know about the book?
No, I was just smiling because you could replace one problem with another.
The book is about ye things.
The next thing could be, well, everybody's running the stop sign.
Right. So-
No, I understand that and I've heard, but I mean, as I pointed out, though, I look out my window and I see a stop sign on a court, and yet, I get a busy intersection and I can't get a stop, stop sign, so-
Yeah.
There just seems to be some inconsistencies, and I'd like to hear somebody from staff on, on data on it.
Yeah, we can invite someone to talk about the warrants for stops. There's a whole list of what's required, and so, but stop signs are listed in our ordinance, so any time we put in a stop sign, it requires an ordinance change, and, because otherwise, it's, I guess it's unenforceable. Same thing with speed limits, all the speed limits are listed in our ordinance, every section of road, and it's, Lacy Road where I live has, there are four different speed limits, depending on where exactly on Lacy Road you are, and it's, it does seem to be a little inconsistent, but it's-
Well, Sine Road is a prime example.
Yeah.
Well, I know that's a county road, and that might be, you know, another jurisdiction that we'd have to work with.
Well, no, Sine Road is Pittsburgh, that's a-
I'm sorry, not Sine Road, MM.
MM, yeah, and MM, there was a, there was a battle to lower the speed limit on MM in front of those houses near the quarry, and the county finally did lower it, I think it's only 45 there, where the rest of it's 55.
Well, I don't know, I think there's, there's multiple different speeds.
Right.
You slow down, you speed up, you slow down, you know, and then I hear from residents all the time, oh, you know.
But MM, MM, we don't have any control over, except to lobby the county, but the other, other streets we do. Did we lose Joe?
Oh. What's that? Oh, okay. Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow, I agree with Randy about that topic, the, it's just because traffic concerns are just so often what we get as alders, and it's like such a public concern that people want the answers, and there are answers, but it would be nice to maybe have a session where we clarified for the public all of those elements that we, when someone asks us, it's, we get the same answers over and over again, so like, I agree, having something on, on the record about how this, we go about this. The other thing that has been lacking, because we are missing a transportation engineer, is back when Andrew McFadden was the engineer, he was talking about updating the, what do you call it, the neighborhood traffic management plan and the community action response, so it gives like, it gives the public a way to actually request something that maybe they were told no, but they can go ahead and they can get signatures from their neighbors, and that process, obviously, I think it needs to be updated, but if we're able to do that, then we can have a session about that, and it just helps, having it on the record clarifies it, because we can send that to a neighbor or we can reference it back, and we can make sure that people have, have the best, like, most up-to-date knowledge, and also feel empowered to take action if the answer is like, oh, we can't do anything, but, but there is an option for you to go down. So, yeah, I agree, it's something that, we deal with it so often, it-
Right.
It deserves that, that, like, open discussion.
And then, there are residents who, you know, they're not satisfied with one alder and they'll go to another alder, and I'm talking about outside of districts. Everyone's name has been mentioned here, then they come to me and, you know, we pass it around, you know, but then we're also passing it to staff to regenerate whatever they've responded before. And, I mean, they're legitimate concerns, don't get me wrong, it's just that we need to have the conversation, I believe, yeah.
All right. So that, you know, I think those four things, I think the wells, limits for board members, the traffic in the neighborhood, I forget what that was called. It was the-
Neighborhood traffic management process?
Yeah.
There is a website, I can send it to you guys if you want to take a look at what exists.
No, I remember when we created that.
I'll send the-
Chad, isn't the team was going to work and update that? Can you?
Yeah, so that, the presentation on this topic probably should wait until at least late summer, early fall. Engineering is hopeful that perhaps one of their interns that's coming on this summer can update the NTMP, Neighborhood Traffic Management Process or Plan, and I think that it would be helpful to have that updated before we do that presentation in particular.
Well, it may be helpful to have some input from the council before having it updated.
That could be.
And I have to inject here that Ross, I think it's Ross, who's on Public Works or, he's not the traffic engineer, but he did an excellent job of answering the most recent request for a stop sign.
So do you think August would be too soon for that?
It's too soon for me to commit to it. You know, I think, I think, I don't know, I don't know what the intern situation looks like, I don't know what they've had a chance to do, so-
All right, well, we'll keep, we'll keep those two topics, because that's going to, that's going to be the same people. The stop signs and that's going to be the same people, so rather than drag them out here twice, let's see how that goes. Joe, are you back? I see your name up there.
Yes.
Did you have anything you wanted to throw on the-
I was trying for my phone and it died, so I'm on my laptop now.
Did you have a log you wanted to throw on the fire?
Um, I mean, I know it was discussed to have a conversation about like the hub and the teen center, but I'm not necessarily going to push it, given the other items that are on there, but I will just put it on public record that that's an interest.
Yeah, when is that RFP due back?
It was.
It's back already?
It's been back for about a month and two weeks.
All right, so what's the, what's going on with it now?
Administrator Brecklin, you want to speak to it?
Yeah, sure. Planning and zoning has finished up their evaluation of the proposal- I actually am looking to set up a time to chat with Mayor Aratafrada about the, that project in particular.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead, Gabriella. I did send a list of topics, but I just do think that we haven't had a presentation on planning and zoning in a few years. I think there might be some value in revisiting that with our new planner. And then housing and affordability. Affordability of housing is just such a huge issue that, I know we've discussed it recently, but I feel like we always talk about it and we don't really have an opportunity to like talk about solutions and what potential actual solutions there are. And maybe that's, maybe that's housed in the Housing Advisory Committee and they invite the council. I don't know. But I just do think that's a really big one. And then the other thing, too, is I could talk to Misty about this, but when we talk about the budget, it'd be really interesting to talk a little bit more about levy limits and have more information about that. Because I just think that's an important, that's such an important context for the city and for referendums. And I feel like it's something that I don't always feel like I fully understand. And then also, I think the public really doesn't have a full understanding of it. And so when we talk about a referendum, the need for that, we have no, we have very little on the public record about how levy limits work, why they exist. And I think that that's a lack in terms of, that's a part of the referendum conversation, but maybe it needs to happen before, or just have more out there. Because I would love to discuss it more and find out more about it. And I just don't feel like I have a lot of venues to do that, so.
Yeah, we can probably do that when Ellers is here, because they will, that's a topic near and dear to their hearts. Go ahead.
Okay. In the past, for the Healthy Neighborhood Initiative, you know, from the people that we, you know, they get the grant money. In the past, Wade did a presentation here in this body about what some of those non-for-profit organizations, what they have done with the money that we provide to them. So I don't know if it's something that you're going to bring to here, or you're going to, it could be a presentation in the House, in the Healthy Neighborhood Committee, you know what I mean, Healthy Neighborhood Committee. Maybe that, maybe it's not a topic for this council, this body, but maybe I think you should have that, you know, that presentation. You know, to have an idea, okay, what you're doing with the money that we are providing to you, you know, what are the results, you know, what, you know what I mean? I don't know.
Yeah, well, we get, last year, we got the report after all the programming was done that said how many people participated and, you know, that kind of thing. So I expect we'll have the same thing this year. I know there's, I know that they, that each organization in order to get their reimbursement has to provide...
No, no.
A detailed report. So hopefully, we'll have that and we can get that to the council.
Another topic about housing, you know, because we had a housing fund. So I don't know if this is going to be a discussion in the housing committee, but we need to determine what we're going to do with the money. What is the priority? You know, what are the projects? So I think we need to have a discussion. I don't know if it's going to be the housing committee, or it should be something that this council should be discussed. Okay?
Well, it's going, I think it's going to have to be discussed at the council level at some point, because the issue, the issue of affordable housing in the city of Pittsburgh is not, it's going to take some broader strokes. And it's probably going to require, it's going to probably require CDA's involvement. And there's, and it's going to require some planning involvement. And there's a lot of things that are going to be, that are going to have to get wrapped into that. So we have, in the past, had big, bigger meetings where we've, where we've had multiple committees sitting around a table, trying to hash through some bigger issues. We did that when we, when we approved Smart Code, and we did that for something else, where we basically brought a bunch of tables in here and had everyone's, had four or five committees sitting around a table, just hashing through all the stuff that was involved with these things. Because sometimes, as, you know, the committees go off and do their stuff, but getting that information from the committee to the other relevant bodies is not always the easiest thing. So I, but I, but the affordable housing issue is really big. Something else I would like to see soon, and I don't think we'll have time to do it at a Committee of the Whole meeting, and I'm not even sure that I want to wait till May, but I would like to get a rundown on the, on the police building of what the actual steps were that involved selecting this site, what council action was involved with that. Did we have a resolution that the council passed to pick that site? I want to know how, because it seems like, from my perspective, talking about Jim's process, it seems like this has just been, it just suddenly became a reality. And I don't recall ever voting on that site as the site for the police station. I don't recall any kind of site analysis being done. And maybe it was, and I just wasn't aware of it. Maybe it happened before I returned to the council two years ago. I don't know. But I would like to know how that happened, because it feels like it's just a steamroller that's, that's, that's coming down the highway, and there's no ability to stop it. And I think, I think, I don't want to stop the police station, but I want to get it in the right place. I want to put $30 million of investment in the right place in the city so that it makes sense for our future. So I don't know if that's something you can just put together and send it out to us, or if we can do it at a council meeting or whatever. I don't think it's a big discussion, but I'd like to know how we got here. Gabriella?
One small note, that's a different topic, but I just realized, too, that I do mention those interesting, like, presentations I have on RCC or whatever. I think I mentioned them in my council report, but I very rarely actually send them to the council. So I think I might start doing that. I feel like I should have done that in the past, but just send the video so in case you're interested. You all can just easily watch it versus having to go in and figure out exactly what the timestamp is. So, and I would just say that if anyone else in any of the commissions has some interesting presentation, I would be very interested in knowing what that was. And not just a summary, but like, if you're like, oh, you should take a look at this. I would be very interested in having that. So I would invite other people to do that, too. And I will probably start doing that more. Thanks.
Okay, so what I recall from the conversation, it was always, the discussion was, there used to be a committee, I don't know, remember Chad, when it was a committee with Mayor Gonzalez? I don't know, he put together a committee to discuss...
Are we back on the police facility?
Yeah, the police. Yeah, I don't know, that time.
That was under Mayor Arnold.
Arnold, yes. So there was a committee, and then the discussion there, we have an study, and it was a group of people, and I was part of that committee. And the discussion was, you know, to do it in this campus, it was to be an extension of this building or a standalone building. So that one was a discussion, and the discussion was, at that moment, it was decided that it's going to be in the civic campus, that we're going to do it. I don't know, there is, I don't remember if there is an, we passed an ordinance or resolution. I don't remember, because it was in 2016, 17, maybe, if we discussed this. But the discussion was expansion of this building or standalone. And if we are going to do a standalone, because we don't want to, we had that piece of property there, there was a park, but then now is, we can use it. We can, we can utilize that parcel for that. I want to tell you my perspective about other locations. We had to be careful where we build a police station in the city of Pittsburgh. We had to be very careful. And I think this one is the correct place. There are areas where if we build a $30 million building, we can send the wrong message.
I think we are about to get scolded for going way beyond...
Well, you asked, I want to tell you by opinion.
I'd like to kind of recall back a few slides back about discussing non-agenda items. And I think we're kind of treading in that direction. So I think this may very well be an interesting topic. I think there would be absolutely no problem with the city administrator distributing some information if he has available. If this needs to be on the agenda for the next meeting or some other meeting, certainly we can make that happen, too. But I think in the interest of making sure that everyone has the opportunity to be heard, we should probably put a pin in this or just...
Thank you for creating a real-life example of the slides that were discussed earlier today. Yep. I was waiting for that.
You have to say like this, Chad, stop it.
Signal yes.
Oh, yes.
All right. Any other topics people would like to see on future Committee of the Whole agendas?
Okay.
Bill?
Bill? Yes. I would like to see us entertain some meaningful action on things like climate change and the overall health of our city. You know, the plant commission should take up, you know, the concept of infill development almost exclusively and ending sprawl, electrifying everything, updating our building codes to passive house standards. Houses built in Terra Vessa burn just as much gas as my house that was built in 1995. And I think that's, I think we're overdue for some updates there. Other things like Vision Zero. Apropos to last night's conversation, perhaps an educational session on land value tax as opposed to our current property taxes. Other, you know, big ideas. Educational, expand our scope.
Yeah, that may be problematic, because the city can only, the city can only exercise taxing authority in, under Wisconsin state statute. So we can't just come up with a new taxing scheme that doesn't comply with state statute.
There's some of that education I was just mentioning.
We've looked at, we've looked at other things, other possible ideas in the past, and there just isn't a provision in state statute for them, so.
I think a number of those issues, there may be some limitations in terms of state law and making ordinances that are more restrictive than state law as far as building codes and things of that nature.
True, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't actively talk about them and encourage our developers to do this. And, you know, maybe leverage whatever power of TID, you know. If you want to, if you want to do your development and you want the, to be in the TID itself, maybe you need to play by some rules.
I have argued for that for many years. It's very hard, because there's, there's, there are, there are people who feel that developers should just be able to do what they want. I'm not one of those, but there are some. And that's a difficult, that's a difficult battle to bear. But I think if we can come up with some specifics, those can be included, absolutely, as restrictions. So anyhow, anything else? Well, seeing no other items, our next Committee of the Whole meeting is on May 24th. And it would now be that magical time when someone has to make a motion.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Oceans have been made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed motion carries.